All right. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am your Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a very brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television before we get started and the members of the board get seated. So this evening is a business session of the board. We have just a couple, really, just a couple or a few items on the agenda. First to include, under New Business, the board will hear a presentation on the 2025 Proposed Municipal Budgets. To this point, we've been meeting in budget workshop sessions throughout the preceding months here, and we finally are set to present publicly the culmination of all those meetings and that work. And Finance Director Miller will take that presentation on under New Business. Then, under Subdivisional Land Development, the board will take action to approve a preliminary and final subdivision plan for 6610 Union Deposit Road. They will take action on the improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, and then hear any final announcements before finally making a motion to adjourn. All that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Zomis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. This time, we'll have the approval of the minutes from the September 3, 2024 Community Development, and the September 10, 2024 Parks and Recreation Budget Workshop Meetings. Are there any questions from the board on the minutes? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, you know what, before I'm going to get started, I'm sorry. Wednesday, November 13, I just wanted to announce that the Board of Supervisors had a special executive session here at the Township meeting at 6:00 with an attorney. Tonight, before the meeting, we had executive session with the manager for some more information about the Township. And after we're finished here tonight, there will be an executive session with an attorney afterwards. And that will be for personnel. And on Wednesday, November 13, that was also Personnel Matters. Okay, now we'll go to public comment. Anybody for public comment? I just ask if you would give your name and your address, please.
Good evening. My name is Charles E. Hope III. I live at 6131 Bluestone Avenue, Harrisburg. And I am here, I am here again to complain about the solid waste prices for senior citizens trying to live on Social Security. We do not generate enough solid waste to fill a large green container in a year. In April of 2023, you said it would be in compliance with Ordinance 21-08, which states by volume. In April of 2024, you said that ordinance was for the township's use. Talking to Vicki, 717-6031221, on April 19, 2024, she said the public could not use that ordinance. So, in 2023, you mandate your procedure, and in 2024, you negate it, just like in a dictatorship. Since the effects, since this affects hundreds of mid-states senior citizens, I contacted the ARP because they are, excuse me, letting us know of all the good things they do. Both nationally and Harrisburg office never answered my emails. After talking to the Harrisburg office a few times, my calls would go directly into I sent the Harrisburg office my paperwork through U.S. Mail with my name, address, and ARP number on the envelope. They refused delivery. So much for helping the senior citizens. So I contacted Teresa Boner of the Patriot, excuse me, of the Patriot News. She wrote an article about some of their accomplishments. Here again, I thought, this affecting hundreds of senior citizens and thousands of dollars here in the mid-state, the Patriot News would welcome the challenge. All she did was refer me to their article back in 2023. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Yes, sir. You know the drill.
I do. Bill Miller, 4311 Crestview Road. I didn't have anything to say tonight, but seeing Fire Department and Police Chief here, it's come up at discussion. I'm on the board of the Colonial Crest Association as well. And we have a standpipe at our pond, and the fire departments have come there and pumped to practice drafting. And it's been damaged for a while. We have a neighbor, Alan Apt, he's willing to pay for a new end on it. We had been told by past business manager to cut it off, but I said, I'm not going to cut off any standpipe. I mean, that needs to come from an official person with the official saw. I don't want anybody saying that we did something just because you're told to do it. So my point is, the pond's never been lowered, but it's still a good training site if you guys want to use it. We would need, though, to get the end back on, which, again, we have a neighborhood past president who will pay for it. We just don't have the equipment and a trackhoe to push some probably diagonal-type pieces in the pond then to support it. But if you want to use it, it's good with us, and we can put it on our agenda for the next meeting, and we have a meeting here coming up in December, first Tuesday. As regard to fire protection in that neighborhood, though, the other reason, we like the standpipe, but the problem is, it does damage easily. We have no fire, we have no fire hydrants in Colonial Crest. They're only on Colonial Road. And when you, I would think that if you had to fill, it's kind of dangerous, I would think. And I've been trying for years. I don't know how you would do it. It takes a lot of money. And would you even think it's, you're the experts, would it be good to bring just one ladder off of Colonial Road, down Valley View, which then immediately turns into Lake View, it's kind of strange, so that you can fill tankers off Colonial Road to give the ability for safety? It makes you, it's just make, I think it's, we've discussed it, we thought it was easier, but we're not the fire protection experts. So, we have a standpipe that we could, you can use, but it needs repaired. We have a guy willing to pay for it. Township may have a trackhoe, and you could guide this replacement, and then you guys, they've laid the ladders into the pond and, you know, practiced that. So it's a good, it's a good practice area. Township maintains the driveway, the trucks are heavy. So I think it's a win-win for everybody, but I just don't know what you got, what you want. It's up to you and...
Okay. Chief Fogg, could you maybe get his information or, yeah?
It's actually Chief Hart, but they, they're the ones that do the most. If you get your information, we could probably...
That's right, because that's Linglestown, that's Linglestown area.
Take a look, we could probably put another, people take the bucket, we put on top of it, so. I just don't want anybody going there to use it either. I'm sure it's on your list of non-operable hydrants.
It's in the system, it's out of service at the moment.
Okay, so...
Okay, so if you guys could exchange information and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. It worked out good that the police or the fire were here tonight. Anybody else for public comment? We have a young man sitting in the audience. Are you here for Boy Scouts, maybe?
No.
No? Okay, okay, I was, I was just asking, so, okay. No other public comment. Chairman and board member comments. Board members, does anybody have any comments?
I have one comment, Madam Chair. And I have a short letter to read, and it's addressed to dear fellow board members and residents of Lower Paxton. And after much thought and consideration, I hereby tender my resignation from the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors and Authority Board effective December 31, 2024. It's been my distinct honor and pleasure to serve the public throughout my career, beginning first with the United States Army and Pennsylvania National Guard, moving to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, and finally concluding my time here serving the residents of Lower Paxton Township. Throughout my career, I have also served on a number of volunteer boards and committees, whereupon I look favorably to serving into the future. So I wish to thank you all for your camaraderie, civic engagement, and above all, the opportunity to serve this great community. Thank you.
Well, we're very sad, and we just wish maybe you would consider. We would really appreciate that.
Oh, thanks, Rob.
Okay. Any other board member comments?
So, I'm not sure if I should...
You know what, Mrs. Tom, can you speak, because everybody can't here? If you can pull your, just pull the, pull it down. There you go.
I don't know if I should do it now or if I should do it at announcements, but I've started. So, I sit on the Advisory Board of Dauphin County Children and Youth, and we will be having a Christmas store for children who are in care. Care comes in several different forms. It could be in a individual home, it could be in a residential facility, housing up to maybe six children, it could be in a group home. But I wanted to make sure that everybody in the community who is a foster parent or who is involved with children who are in care knew about the Christmas store, which will be starting on December 11th, out here in Lower Paxton Township on J.C. Avenue. And I will get back to you with the exact address. It took us a while to find a location for our Christmas store, seeing as how the old location over at the East Mall got torn down. But now we have a location that was donated, and we're raring to go, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew. You have to reach out to your, the agency that you're registered with, the agency that you work with, in order to participate. All right?
Okay, thank you so much. Supervisor Joe? Supervisor Joe, nothing?
Last evening Supervisor Zumas and myself, we represent Lower Paxton Township at the Council of Governments. So we were there networking with other supervisors in five different counties that do attend that. I've been the president of that COG for two years. And last night was my last duty, being the president of it for two years. And I really enjoyed working and networking, of course, with the other supervisors in the area. Last Thursday Supervisor Zumas, myself, Manager Gutschaw, Assistant Manager Finance Director, Mr. Miller, we attended the PSAT Regional Forum, which was held across the river, again, with other supervisors networking throughout the south-central area of Pennsylvania. We had workshops in the morning and workshops in the afternoon. And believe it or not, we did learn something. So it was a great day, of course, networking. Let me see, I think of one more thing. Yes, today I was in Gettysburg and leaving after the meeting tonight to go back to Gettysburg. I sit on the Executive Committee for the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. And this is our quarterly meeting. So again, Lower Paxton is being represented. And I sit on that committee. There is 11 people on that committee and they are from all over the state of Pennsylvania. And the furthest one is six miles from the Ohio borderline. So, just a great way to network and again, representing the supervisors here in Lower Paxton Township.
Okay, Managers' Report.
I just have one, one comment if I may, members of the Board and particularly for Supervisor Zumas. It's been an honor to serve alongside of you for, you're now one of the quickly dwindling members of the Board who first hired me here at Lower Paxton Township. So number one, I am personally appreciative of your service, but I kind of got to see a bit more intimate, an insight as to how you've been able to comport yourself as a supervisor. And your diligence with regard to your civic duty has been above and beyond. And I appreciate that personally. And, you know, I've often also appreciated your, the interjection of humor at times when we have an awkward pause in conversation or a tense conversation. Your interjection of humor has been appreciated. And, you know, I even bought a new camel-colored suit tonight because I thought you were going to have the opportunity to poke fun at me one more time, but you didn't take the chance, so. But anyway, I'm going to miss that and your service, so thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. I know Chief Harp can attest to the humor part of it.
That's true.
Since he used to work for me many, many years ago in a totally different capacity.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no old business this evening. New business is the presentation of the proposed 2025 municipal budgets.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to get this so I can stand up a little straighter here. Okay, well, it gives me great pleasure to be here in front of the Board and public tonight and to those watching online or at home as well. This is our formal public presentation of the 2025 budget for the township. This really culminates a series of budget workshops where we've discussed with our department heads and several other reviews in kind of an exhaustion in relation to the budget as before you. And to be quite honest with you, from the start of that in the beginning of September, in those public meetings, not very much has changed at all. Usually you go through a few iterations, but they've been very minor to this point of what they're presented tonight. Now, just quickly, in case I forget, to note at the end, at this point when the presentation ceases, the budget will be put on public inspection. So that'll be a period of two weeks where the public will have access to the documents as all the other documents in our budget workshops online, as well as printed copy here at the office that can be reviewed. All of tonight's materials will be up on our website within the next day or two. And you will find that all of the other presentations and packages from a department head projections and presentations are there as well. So certainly, there is a wealth of material there. And certainly, I would like to give my appreciation to the Board for a very transparent process. I do a lot of teaching for the state. I was a former auditor and audited dozens and dozens of municipalities across PA and Maryland. This is one of the most exhaustive measures of public presentation of a budget that I've really been a part of. And it's great to see. It really allows a lot of public involvement throughout the process. And here we are tonight culminating that. This first sheet is really just high-level overview of some of the things we're going to cover tonight. There are six funds in total that we're setting budgets for, for the township. We're going to focus our time primarily on three of them this evening, but this is kind of a visual overview for you. As noted, we'll have final action on our budgets on December 17th, 2024. This will be the final public board meeting of the year at which most all municipalities will take their final actions for the budget. Changes can happen between now and then. There are provisions within the code if they hit a certain dollar amount where they have to be re-advertized and we go through a little bit more process. But ultimately, they'll still lend themselves to be adopted by the end of the year. Overall, we have a $57.06 million expenditure budget across these six funds. Primary fund for us is the general fund, revenues of just under $30 million and expenses of just over $30 million. So again, a small differential of use of reserves, which will go into more detail in the next several slides. In 2023, we created the Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Fund to handle the new provisions of the contract with Penn Waste, where the township absorbed billing and collection for the savings of the residents. $8 million in revenue and just under $8 million of expense. Again, a very small margin in that fund as well. The State Aid Fund is what is used for our highway liquid fuels. These are gas tax revenues distributed to our municipality, primarily for road services, but can also be used for street lighting and traffic lighting and the like. $1.6 million in revenue and $2 million in expenses. This is a partial spend-down of carryover reserves from previous years. And we'll discuss that a little bit more in detail. We have a new fund this year, the CDBG Fund, based on our population levels, which now exceeded the city, the largest within the county. We hit a number that dictates we can then be a direct recipient of federal funds for community development. So we'll talk about those. Again, very introductory budget in place here for that operation. So as you can see, only $100,000 each way. It's really built to be a fairly net-neutral fund, but may at times require a little bit of subsidization from the general fund for non-qualifying support. Next, we have our General Improvement and our ARPA Fund, our American Rescue Plan Act Fund. This is where we hold our non-routine capital investments. It's been an area where we've covered a lot of deferred maintenance catch-up over the last several years, as well as some very innovative and initiative parks projects. The revenue budget for that is just under $10 million and quite a lot of grant revenues, which we'll be pleased to talk about a little later. Expenditures are just under $14 million. Again, utilizing these existing reserves to fund some significant projects in the next few years to come. Then finally, we'll talk about the Fire Protection Tax and Equipment Fund. This is a dedicated part of a real estate tax village that is specifically for fire protection equipment or apparatus, as well as support to our volunteer groups and any paid complement of staff, which we'll get into as part of the presentation. Revenues of $4.3 million and expenditures of $3.1, you'll see is creating a little surplus, which we'll get into why in, towards the end of this presentation. We also have five other funds which we're really fiduciary or custodian for. So they're not for the benefit of the township. We don't budget for those, but it's worth noting, also manage those in terms... Into the general fund, and again, as I will say, this is a high-level overview because everything discussed here tonight has really been thoroughly discussed at the public budget sessions that we've had. But this certainly gives a kind of a capstone to what has brought us to this point. Our general fund is really there to provide all the general services to the public, our public safety, our public works, parks and recreation services, both active and passive, community and economic development functions, economic development being a new carve-out in this year's budget that we'll note about a little bit, and any general administrative services. Most of these services don't have a direct revenue source to offset those costs, especially when we talk about public works and public safety. You know, when you're supported by the police or by the fire department, you don't, you know, receive those services with a bill. Essentially, those are covered by general taxation. So our real estate tax and our earned income tax is really what fund those sources. Now, the majority of these expenditures are really focused on providing physical services. So as with our municipality, as you'll see with most municipalities, it's very driven off of personnel and related benefit costs. 76% of our total expenditures go towards those personnel-related costs because again, this is really for the provision of services to the general public. Our general fund is balanced in 2025 based on a proposed use, a slight reduction of financial reserves of about $435,000. This result would put our starting 2026 reserves at just under $15 million, as you can see. Now, this is about half of what our current revenue stream is. Our minimum fund balance policy is 25% or three months. Obviously, the goal is to get beyond that 25%. You don't want to be on that cusp because immediately when you hit it, that's a signal that there's problems to come. In the past, the township has kind of threaded that line very tightly. But over the last several years, without any physical tax increase in the general fund, has managed to build a nice reserve. And that really comes down to two things. One, community growth, which we're all aware. Residentially, we continue to grow. But ultimately, it also comes down to very strategic decision-making by the Board of Supervisors in their actions and what they fund and choose to fund. So certainly, kudos to that. As noted, real estate and earned income taxes are the primary funders of the general fund. Just over half of the revenues of the general fund are those two tax sources. We have the General Tax Millage, 1.554 mills, and the Library, .041 real estate tax mills. These are unchanged since 2016, and they're also proposed to be unchanged for 2025. Finally, capital investments within the general fund are pretty limited. Again, these are regular turnover assets, such like general park improvements as benches or physical vehicles for police or public works. We use the General Improvement and the ARPA Fund to cover those more non-routine things. Our major parks investments are overhaul, major traffic or safety initiatives that are being done. On the next three slides, this chart that's on the right will repeat itself. So you keep seeing the same visual. This is looking at 23 actual, 24 budget and 24 projection and 25 budget in relation to revenues and expenditures. Revenues being in the blue, I'm sorry, revenues being in the dark gray and expenditures being in the blue. And you'll see, especially from the revenue standpoint, very consistent. And expenses have spiked and we'll get into that discussion in the next slide. But on the revenue trends, we're proposing an increase of just over $1 million or 4% in revenues versus our 24 budget. This is really based on two major factors. One is continued growth projection within our taxes, primarily our earned income taxes related to continued housing development and occupancy within the area. About a $766,000 increase of that $1 million. The remaining portion is an increase in anticipated permit volume revenues. Now that the interest rate environment is starting to soften a little bit and inflation is settling, we're starting to see the inklings of the uptick with regards to some of that commercial and residential activity that's been quiet for the last year and a half. As I mentioned, revenues are pretty consistent over the chart. As you can see there, the taxes do remain unchanged with the general and library millage for the past five years and into the sixth. From 2012 to 2022, that 10-year period, population rose 15%, but our actual real estate values only rose by 1%. So again, we've got, we've got growth, but it's consistent minimal growth. 2024 budget was conservative for earned income taxes, which continue to improve year over year, right about in that 3% to 4% range for the last couple of years, which is really trending with cost of living assessments in the United States. Now, we're going to expect to see that to re-accelerate over the next couple of years because of the softening interest environment. And we do have a number of residential developments which are primed to start building. Now, the expense trends, we have two slides here. The first is going to focus more on contractual, which is personnel and related benefits. The second being on what we designate as discretionary. Those are more utilities, professional services, things of that nature. For the personnel side, well, overall, 1.97 million or $7, a 7% increase in expenditures over the 24 budget. In relation to that, the bulk of that is coming from the personnel and related benefit side. So overall, this accounts for about $23 million of our expense budget, as mentioned, 76%. This is an increase of 1.63 million or 8% over the previous year. It's really driven by two pieces. Number one is we have departmental requests that are in the current budget presentation for additional staff for 2025. Eight total positions. This is accounted for within the budget, some at partial year consideration, others at full year, depending on the timing of placing those physical roles. Considering the wages and benefits in relation to those positions, that's about a $556,000 increase in relation to the 2025 budget. As noted here in the board, that includes four proposed police officers for public safety, one code enforcement officer, two labors for public works, and a community event specialist for parks and recreation. These are all full-time positions. Now, when we set aside the new positions impact, health insurance is the other piece to the climb. And that was pretty substantial this year. An increase of about $994,000 over 24 budget. This is in two-part relationship. The first being there's no anticipated dividend returned. If you're aware, we're in a consortium where based on our utilization as a group, we can get money back if our actual costs are less than our premiums. In this year, that was not the case. As prescription drug costs, as I'm sure you're, no surprise to you based on how much airplay they get these days, have risen drastically. So it's been a very tight year from our premiums versus our actual costs. So we don't believe we're going to see a dividend in the next year. Where in previous years, that could be anywhere from $250,000 to $600,000. The other side of that is based on that activity, we have a proposed renewal of 19.9% within the consortium. That renewal at that rate is also shared with a lot of different participants. Now, we're not alone in that regard with regards to escalating costs of healthcare. And this has just been a very active year for, for folks, you know, seeking assistance. In relation to expenditure growth over 2023 to 2025 with the budget projection, it's really driven off of personnel-related costs. When we talk about the other side, which is that discretionary piece, again, slightly smaller presentation, $7 million in total expense, 24% of the budget, an increase of about $349,000 or 5%. There's a couple of pieces to this change as well. So within public safety, there are a few new requests as part of the budget. Some of them one-time, others are cumulative and ongoing, including Class A uniforms for all uniform staff, increased subscriptions. There is also our first year of our WatchGuard Cloud, which is an expensive proposition, but it's part of the body camera and mobile vehicle camera units that we have that are really attuned to a big part of public safety. Capital equipment and vehicle outfits. This includes replacing existing vehicles as well as some new vehicle outfits as an attempt to help to see about reducing some of our overall repairs and maintenance costs moving forward. And then finally, there are some recruitment and promotion investments being made to help better attract new talent as we head into the market for new individuals, as well as planning for retirees to come. These in total are about $231,000 addition to the bottom line. Next, we have about $50,000 of new consulting seminars and subscriptions for the Economic Development Department. The development, Economic Development Department was a presentation in early October to the Board. It is primarily a segregation of existing expenses. It's mostly a couple of staff members and existing subscriptions and activities we have. But about $50,000 in new spending tied with those direct economic investment activities. Majority of the other categories within our budgetary constraints remain very comparable to 24. In wrapping expenditures, general obligation bond debt, that's included in those discretionary costs above. Those are primarily related to improvements that we've done in municipal facilities. We have no debt that's been issued for operational needs, which is good, good to hear, good to say. We have that budgeted of 1.98 million with no new general fund bond or loan debt that is proposed. Now, in relation to that 1.98 million, it's going to be static for another year and declines over $200,000 a year, starting in 2027, and then declines by nearly $1 million a year when we start in 2029. We do have a good number of years past that into, I think it was about 2040, where it's finally satisfied. But again, it creates capacity for additional... But again, it creates capacity for additional one-time significant investments in mostly facilities. Shifting to the Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Fund. As noted, this was created in 2023 when we took on those billing and collection efforts from Penn Waste. In relation to that billing, we're saving roughly 1.67 million over the population annually by doing that in-house at $5 a quarter administrative versus $100 a year. In relation to that, we project that the quarterly billing is going to be around 8 million. And as I mentioned, expenses with the charges for Penn Waste for the contractual agreements, as well as our office and administrative functions to collect and manage the delinquent processes, is just under 8 million. Now, as a reminder to folks, our contract rates change twice a year. They change every January 1st based on what the Dolphin County incinerator tipping fee becomes. That's the amount of cost that Penn Waste has by taking the refuse to the tip station. In 2024, that was a 72 cents a quarter increase for customers. So again, very minor. And every July 1st, there'll be a contract increase, which those are, again, still on the website under our solid waste page, and an adjustment for any fuel changes within the physical year. That could be an increase or a decrease. Again, we expect it to be very minor any given year. For this year, effective in July, there was actually a 1 cent decrease. This, as you can see there, slightly over 8, slightly under 8 for revenue and expenses, creates a small amount of reserves. The idea behind that was to plan for the additional contractual increases that we'll have in future years to try and keep that $5 quarterly administrative charge as flat as long as we possibly can. As mentioned, the State Aid Fund is focused on our highway liquid fuels allocations from PennDOT. We have 215 out of our 218 miles of roadway that this goes to support. 1.63 million in revenues. As you can imagine, that's not a whole lot of money to support over 200 miles of road. So it does not go far, unfortunately. And also unfortunately, it does continue to become very static and show signs of decline. Total proposed expenditures in the fund, as I previously noted, was just over 2 million. This is a $657,000 increase for a 24 budget, primarily due to a couple of equipment investments. We have a track loader that's proposed for next year and a replacement dump truck that was expected to be 24, which is mostly shifting to 25. Now, out of that 2 million, 2.11 million dollar budget, 1.1 million of that proposal is specific for paving projects. Those are still in analysis. We don't know at this time what will be proposed for that bid project, but it'll be determined here, usually right about the start of the year when that package is bid out. And then we know the areas of roadway we'll be focusing on for 2025. But in essence, 1.1 million equates to just a little over 2 miles of paving or really, if it alone funds paving, a 92-year turnover plan. The state of funds balance based on the use of reserves, as I've noted, and it brings us to starting 2026 of about 621,000. So there's still accumulated reserves to help us with additional equipment needs and some additional paving if the opportunity arises. As noted, the CDBG fund is new. There's not a whole lot to say because it's very infancy, but I'd like to just say a little bit about the physical program. Really focuses on building stronger and more resilient communities through the federal government, funding us through HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. Based on our population growth, we became eligible to receive these funds directly. Therefore, we don't have to compete with the, with other municipalities to the county to get these funds. The allocation is very small. It's only about $250,000, but it enables us kind of a guaranteed revenue stream year after year to be able to make dedicated efforts that are in low or moderate income areas as well as qualifying improvements to public infrastructure and spaces, mostly around the ADA environment. So allow us to do ADA improvements at parks as well as municipal facilities. Now, our 2025 budget is pretty sparse because again, this program is really just getting up and going. We finally got our first award officially issued and available to us and have mostly been working on administratively, administratively setting up the program. But we do have an active transportation plan that's going on right now. We're currently bidding out the, the actual engineering support for that physical work. We have a small grant to help subsidize that as well. That additional fund awards help us cover program administrative support. So we can make sure that all the proper federal filings and provisions are in place. And then it also includes some additional, some initial costs into locust lane traffic signal improvements that are going to be focused on in the next coming couple of years. Again, this is just kind of starting in its infancy again, and more projects will be starting up with the next several years. Next, the 2025 general improvement and ARPA funds budget. So in relation to ARPA, you're pretty familiar with that terminology. We received just over $5 million of federal awards that were kind of generated out of post-COVID to help spur municipal investment. We have already recognized all the requirements behind those federal funds. So those monies are essentially set aside to be used for projects as the board so approves. In relation to those, those activities, we have projected reserves to start 2025 of just under 4 million. 3 million is going to be proposed within this 2025 use, which gives us just a little over a million for projects going into the 2026 to 2028 range. Now, the ARPA relates to general improvements fund because the ARPA holds additional cash and will transfer it over to improvement funds as we actually do physical projects. So this fund is used to budget for those non-routine projects, often that span multiple periods, especially with our transportation projects, sometimes two to three years. Now, these are funded through a mix of grants, bond proceeds, restricted donations and contributions, as well as transfers in the general fund as they are necessary. Next year's proposed budget for general improvement, as you can see, is just under $13 million. And that primarily comes from three sources. The first would be the use of ARPA funds of 2.75 million and about 119,000 from the general fund for smaller projects. And then just under 10 million in federal, state, county grant support for these proposed projects. And actually, most of this balance is awarded. Every year, we have certain projects which we will, what we have in a submission process or plan to submit where we tie that in the budget for an expectation to receive. Ultimately, if we don't receive, that project gets pulled back and we will try again at a later date. But most of that 10 million is actually awarded funds. So it has been very active and certainly we're very proud of what's been able to be accomplished in a pretty short period of time. And had a very small amount projected from short-term earnings from unspent park monies of just under 1,000. So I like this visual because it really kind of hones in on the investments we're talking about. In relation to 2025 investments, here's what we're looking for between transportation, parks and rec, and public safety and economic development. And again, very significant funding. Since we received the initial ARPA funds and had taken some initiatives from the board to invest some of our sold parklands into capital investment, we have over 19 million of investment through this 2025 campaign. And there'll be an additional 4-plus million after that point. So certainly very substantial. Helped cut up a lot of work, but it also helped a number of very initiative investments. And I think the, the board should certainly be very proud of the parks investments, which have been robust and touching every area that we can. I have a couple bullets here in relation to the detail and the improvements. I don't want to spend a lot of time here because, again, as I mentioned, we, you know, we, we have kind of exhausted a lot of time talking to the details. But in relation to that 14 million of expenses, they primarily break down between public works, transportation and our park system. So as noted in the previous slide, about 7.5 million to public works and transportation projects. We have 5 million that are really tied with pedestrian and traffic safety improvements. Those look in the Union Deposit Corridor, Linglestown Square, as well as Route 22 around the Prince Street areas and along Prince Street for pedestrian mobility as well. Of this total, 1.7 million, just under 1.7 million of this is in relation to a, a new project for Safe Streets for All. This is a regional project that the township took the lead in representing the local transportation groups, the regional transportation agency, HATS, as well as most of our neighboring constituents. So the township kind of is the centralized individual, centralized group to submit this grant and will administer it. So we're certainly proud of that initiative and our counterparts are very pleased for the support that we're issuing to help that become a reality. Focused on road safety auditing and temporary safety improvements, which if they prove to be desire of permanent, there are separate grant streams for permanent improvements that can be looked at in the future. The Crumbswell Road Bridge Replacement Project, we have a portion of that anticipated within 25. Again, this is a PennDOT and federally funded project. The township investment is actually very small in this overall project. So it's really going to be driven by the federal and state agencies. So this could drag out a bit, but certainly some very needed improvements within line of distance within that area that are really going to make that much more safe and put the bridge up to current requirements. We have about 1.6 million in traffic signal improvements, mostly within Route 39 corridor and Colonial Road, certain corridors of that area. And these are predominantly grant-funded as well. And then lastly, fleet fueling station improvements. We have underground unleaded and diesel tanks, which will be brought above ground and replace some of our filling station equipment within this new year. This has some money that we receive from the county, but it's mostly going to come from our ARPA reserves. Parks and Recreation, we have a few major projects to note. Stray Winds Park, there is playground and trail improvements that are anticipated, 295,000 coming from dedicated park funds. In Coons Park, a myriad of improvements, including walking path upgrade and expansion. They're going to do some patch and paint to the tennis courts and the playground replacement as well, totaling 416,000 in total, coming from ARPA funds. In Cole Park, there are court facilities updates and some initial upgrades within the Happy Tales Dog Park. 541,000 in total. Part of that is coming from the county and some restricted grants that are received for the dog park. And the remainder will be from designated parks and ARPA funds. Happy Tales may go through a few iterations over time as there's some very significant plans in place that are really going to be driven on our ability to, to find some additional grant sources and some private funding sources to help make that a terrific reality for the future. And then lastly, George Park, as our Parks Master Plan really identifies, George Park is really looked at as an activities hub. So there's some very substantial investment programs within that plan, which are really going to take additional grant funds to, to really make that a, a reality. And we currently have a million-dollar pending grant application and pending grant plans to cover about half of the initial phase of hub improvements to the park, including pickleball, volleyball and basketball courts kind of in the center area of the, of the park. Of course, we're well aware, future investments are going to look at possibility place as well as other areas of George Park, which are identified in master plan and really tied around the ability of grant funds and public support to make those again, a, a real reality. Very minimal remaining reserves in the general improvement fund. Again, the ARPA fund holds those dollar amounts segregated. These are really where we keep our reserve parks monies. So not too many left in unspent fee and lieu at the end of next year. And then lastly, we'll talk about the Fire Protection Tax and Equipment Fund budget. So this accounts, as I mentioned, for a dedicated tax millage for supporting fire protection services within the township, including significant capital investment into apparatus for each of the departments. As we're all very well aware, we continue to have very significant statewide and national decline of volunteer firefighters. And some of the stats in front of you are really not surprised. They're, they're very well-publicized as far as the, the reduction of physical numbers from 300,000, you know, probably about 30, 40 years ago to roughly 30,000 now. This puts a strain on the ability to provide, you know, 24/7, 365 days a year coverage. Kudos to the board. A very innovative stipend program was implemented in 2023. I think the initial plan just hit its one-year mark, initially for dedicated shift coverages. And during 2024, it expanded to give 24-hour coverages within stations. This has really aided in staffing our volunteer stations and dedicated response. But we're really in a period of historically high levels of call volume, and it still puts stresses on the manpower needed to provide levels of service within the community. In response to this stress and also coming out of some implementation recommendations from the Comprehensive Independence Study that we had on fire and rescue services back in 2022, the township budget for this fund does propose a fire tax, fire real estate tax millage increase from .6365 to 1.24 mills. And this is to fund initial career fire staff for the safety and protection of the citizens and property within the township. Now, in relation to that increase for the average homeowner within the township, and based on our assessment of the Dolphin County tax rolls, that's a value of about 157,500. Based on that value, this would result in an $8 a month increase to your current tax bill or $95 a year in relation to the proposed increase. Now, tying that into the operating expenses, that budget is proposed at 3.38 million for next year. This includes 948,000 in wages and benefits for the existing management as well as a partial year impact of a proposed 10-career firefighter hires to aid in the volunteer firehouse staffing and dedicated response. 690,000 of the budget is for the Continued Volunteer Staffing Stipend Program, continuing on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week incentivization program to help with our minimum vehicle responses and our response manning. 529,000 is the proposed allotments to provide to the three volunteer companies. So this equates to about $176,000 each. 278,000 is what's dedicated for fire hydrants as part of the fire protection and equipment tax. A piece of that tax is to use for the specific fire hydrants. There is still final implementation of Veolia PUC rate case on hydrants. I think the end result is going to be very substantial. So that number is going to rise a good bit. So we'll, we'll keep tabs on that and keep evaluating that as we progress. 305,000 contribution to our equipment plan capital reserve. This is what the township invests internally to be able to pay for future apparatus with cash rather than financing those activities. And lastly, 315,000 in debt service for a prior ladder apparatus purchase. This budget was proposed to add $891,000 to the existing reserves to bring them to 1.53 million. And this is really to help us with the, with generating reserves to help offset those future contractual costs and the eventual full-year staffing cost as we proceed with the fund. Now, the reserve funds pending apparatus sales from the prepayments we've made with three of the pumper units are pretty minimal right now, but those will regain themselves. And really, within the foreseeable future, the capital plan should be self-sufficient, as is with the current contribution levels being made within the budget. As I like to do with the presentation, I like to wrap with a couple of slides that, that talk about our municipal taxes and the actual tax impact to your average homeowner. So we can kind of gauge and understand, you know, when you get a tax bill, you know, who is that for and where is the, where is that money going? With the increase to the volunteer, I'm sorry, with the increase to the fire tax proposed for this year, that would take our real estate tax millage to 2.835. That is the dollar cost per every $1,000 of your home's assessed value. Now, in relation to that, 157,500 average value, that equates to an annual tax cost to the township of $446.50 for 2025 services. You see the visual here is how that breaks down between the millage for fire protection, the millage specific for library services, and then our general services, which we mentioned. That's public safety, it's public works, it's parks and recreation. Within our county, there are only five municipalities that have populations over 20,000. That includes ourselves, Wataro, Susquehanna, Derry and the city of Harrisburg. Now, when we put the city aside, because we don't like to include them in, in assessments for comparison, their millage, as you can see, is, you know, in total over 36 mills. Whereas again, we're two. We take them out and we do the average on the remaining group. The average between these remaining four municipalities is 3.4614. And we look within all the taxing municipalities within the county. That would be 36 in total when we take two of them out that have no millage rates. when we take two of them out that have no millage rates, and then a couple that have over 30 rates. The county's average is 4.295. So again, even with the increase with the fire tax, we're still very substantially lower than our neighboring communities, and especially those with a larger population. As many entities fine with the population, as your population grows, it does put pressure on additional public service needs, especially in the public safety environment. Those are directly driven off of tax dollars, so certainly we are still in a very good position against our neighbors, and I always present that to the board as that gives us capacity in the future to ensure that we have the proper investments and increases over time that we need to provide proper public safety and proper roads management, infrastructure management for our citizens. Here's a quick visual to kind of give an idea for an average household in taxes, because again, that's the township, but when you pay your real estate taxes, you pay three pieces, the township, the county, and the school district. For those of us that are still in a working environment, you also have income taxes that you pay, and earned income taxes go both to the school district and the township. So this chart here gives an idea for an average home with 157,500 value, an average household income of 84,000, this assumes two working adults based on U.S. Census data. This is your average of local taxation that you have within the township. So within that real estate, as I mentioned, $447 is going to come to the township to support our general functions we provide to the community. $1,138 will go to the county. Now, this is based on the 2024 rate. If they change based on 2025, that number would change accordingly. The school district is obviously the largest tax bill you pay. That would equate to $2,750 a year based on their millage. As you can see, the millage amounts are noted as they currently stand. On the income tax side, you pay 2% earned income tax. 1.5 goes to the school and 0.5 comes to the township. You also have a $52 per head local service tax, which goes to help specifically public service, specifically in relation to emergency services and fire protection. That equates to $524 to the township and $1,260 to the school district. So of this total, about $6,100 in tax, only $970, or about 16%, comes to the township, and this supports all those functions that we've talked about today, public safety, roads, maintenance and management, as well as our vast Parks and Recreation Services, both upkeep of passive parks and active, you know, community-desired amenities across our complete 28-plus square mile municipality. Just a quick visual, next week, there'll be a presentation from the authority. The township and the authority are segregated entities, but obviously we share a very symbiotic relationship. Just a quick, a couple stats here about the authority budgets, which will be set to be adopted next Tuesday here at 7:00 PM with the Authority Board. Right around the 20 million point in revenue and expenditures on the sewer for the operating side. On the capital side, a small amount of revenue, mostly grant-driven, but 14 million of expenses. This is using existing debt issued to continue capital project improvements in Beaver and Paxton Creek areas. On the stormwater side, again, pretty net neutral budget of revenues and expenses as well. And on the capital side, about $5 million in expenses, again, utilizing some past bond issuances for some of the stormwater project work that's happening. In both cases, there are no sewer or stormwater rate changes proposed for 2025, so this would hold those at the existing rates. All in all, putting the authority and township together, this is the management of over $100 million expenditures budget, so very substantial. It certainly takes a lot of time and effort of the staff, and I can't thank them enough for their efforts in pulling details together, putting up with a lot of Q&amp;A, a lot of meetings, and obviously coming before the board in hearing and budget sessions to really lay out what they believe they need to take their department forward, as we're trying to find new and inventive ways to connect with citizens and maintain our assets into the future with hopefully complementary tax rates to what our investments are. So I certainly open up for questions. It's a lot of detail. As I mentioned, it's not much beyond what we've already covered really in workshops, but we certainly want to have this time open for any questions that the board or public may have.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Sam, I think you showed earlier, we project revenues to go up 4% and expenses 7%. And then in our budget meetings, I think it was for the out years, next several years, project revenues go up 1% per year and expenses 4% per year. Is that close?
Yes, that's historically what we've seen. Again, with any budget, our goal is to, you know, exceed our revenues and spend less than our expenses. We've had good trend record of that. Oftentimes, it's one or two events that weren't really quite predictable that happened, like health insurance dividend or generous, you know, tax increase that we see with regards to earned income. But historically, yeah, we've been seeing a general tale of the revenues being outpaced by those expenditures. We really call that a structural deficit.
The chart doesn't look good when you look at the two lines going out.
That's correct.
And when I look at 7% increase in expenses, I have to wonder, and some of that's unavoidable, are we doing everything we can be doing to prepare, you know, for these projected numbers? And I'm a little concerned. Should I be concerned?
Well, at the end of the day, it does rest in the board's hands. As we've talked about, and as we had through the Strategic Management Plan Program that we went through, it really identified what is very common with municipalities, which is expenditures do out-trend revenues. Ultimately, we have our tax capacity to assist us in that manner, because again, it's about a structured balance between any way we can do things differently to help reduce costs, or if the board sees fit to specific cuts of requests versus that discussion about, you know, the tax rate has been flat for six years. That's a great run. Does that continue every year? Or do incremental changes get discussed, do larger changes that are kind of planned for, predicted for the future? At this point, we have strong fund balances. We have a very competitive tax rate within our surrounding jurisdictions. I always label those as capacity. It gives us opportunity to look at that. Now again, there's always room for looking at complement personnel, expenditures, focus and investments, and I think certainly that's our focus as management, working with the department heads throughout the year to ensure we're always thinking about that and how we can work with that. And certainly, we start the process with the board as really a determination to see where we want to go investment-wise strategically into the future. So there are signs of concerns out there. They've really been there for some time. We've been working to hedge those as we go. I think we've been doing pretty good so far, but again, there will be kind of that point where, as we see with this budget, there's a request to provide more staff support, and that does come with a price.
It does. And also, Mr. Juddoff, I may also add a bit more context as well. So I think to just echo everything that, and agree with everything that Mr. Miller just mentioned, in addition to the fact that I think we've been quite pleased and quite benefited by the fact that the Lower Paxton Township has a very, a board that is very open to allowing some frankly, pretty innovative kind of financing mechanisms that frankly aren't seen across the state. Pennsylvania, as you know, is not necessarily known as a laboratory of innovation, particularly with regard to municipal government, but in this case, I think we've been able to do some pretty innovative things to include, beginning as Sam had noted, the OPEB Trust Fund, which would really allow us and has already quite drastically been able to allow us to further invest our long-term post-retirement healthcare benefit costs. Things like starting for the first time a fee-in-lieu of program with regard to our public works infrastructure, so allowing private entities to, rather than paving small various portions of streets where they do, you know, things like utility cuts and whatnot, allowing us instead to invest that money and apply that through a more comprehensive approach to taking care of our transportation network. That's been very innovative and very successful. So, you know, while we often don't have the ability to kind of get a handle on the revenue side of things in Pennsylvania, we have very little control over local government revenue per statute. We're really only allowed to do a few revenue sources. In spite of that, we've been able to do some pretty innovative things on the revenue side, and so that certainly helps, and in addition to everything that Sam had just mentioned.
Yeah, and the grants, the grant success has been just amazing these last several years. It really has been, and we've been working with some good strategic partners there to make those happen. There's only so much that internal administrative staff can do, and it's a struggle for many municipalities, but we've been on the better side of that now for a few years, and hopefully we can keep that trend continuing.
Well, and if you look at the grants that we've received so far this year, it's just amazing. Yeah. Does anybody else have a question?
Just a comment. I'll tie this in only because we have great representation from the fire department, and Mr. Miller's at the podium, but just briefly, LoSAP is a program that's called a length-of-service awards program, and we had an issue where we consolidated all our accounts, our retirement accounts under one to save money, and they determined, I think it was U.S. Bank, determined that this tax would be, this money would be taxable to the members that were entitled to receive this money. Caused a little bit of a morale problem, because the state of Pennsylvania's law was vaguely written, and whoever was preparing the tax could interpret it as it's not taxable or it is taxable. So we had people receiving it who were not taxed previously, who were currently being taxed and wanted to know why. Well, it was because of the law in Pennsylvania was written in such a way where whoever was preparing the tax decided to do it this way or decided to do it that way. So to make a long story short, I went to the state representative, sat down with Representative Kerwin at the time. He recommended that we get bipartisan support, reach out to Representative Fleming, who took the bull by the horns and decided, hey, you guys got a good point, you know, this is not designed to punish somebody, you know, it's an award. So he went and wrote the bill, and Mr. Miller and I had the opportunity to get down to the Capitol and testify in front of the Finance Committee about what this program was and why we needed the verbiage changed in the law. Make a long story short, it took over a year, but a couple weeks ago, it was voted out of the House of Representatives 100% in favor of making it non-taxable to any firefighter that's entitled to this award. So they sent it on to the Senate. Unfortunately, the Senate was just getting out of session, didn't have enough time to address it, but it will be addressed at the next session. So just wanted to kudos to Mr. Miller for all the research he did, and I just wanted to let everybody know that it's moving in the right direction. It should be law that would not be interpreted as taxable. It'll be a non-taxable benefit for the fire departments.
So will that happen in the first session of 2025?
It should.
I appreciate the recognition, but it really goes to you, sir. You were certainly instrumental in making that come forward, and I, this is the first time I got to testify in front of the House. That was a blast. I enjoyed that.
Okay, does anybody from the public have any comment? Like to come to the podium? Yes, sure. We'll need to have your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Sean Harp. I'm the Fire Chief of Lingelstown Fire Company. I reside at 6205 Jerome Boulevard in Lingelstown. So Madam Chair, members of the board, I just wanted to take a moment to come here, because we are talking about the fire budget, and during the budget meetings, we unfortunately ran out of time. So there's just a few points that I wanted to make sure I brought out, so that we can move forward in a good manner. So back in July, I believe it was, Bureau staff introduced the idea of the paid staffing to assist the volunteers, to fill those voids where, you know, staffing levels are dropping in different areas and different stations. They at that time asked for letters of support from the three fire chiefs, which all three fire chiefs did give letters of support. I hope you're able to see mine. If not, I have copies of it that I can distribute to you guys. But in that letter, I did state that I'm generally in support of anytime we can get more people in a fire truck is a good thing, right? There's always jobs to do for that piece of apparatus, and if there's less people on it, that's more wear and tear on the people that are on those rigs. So I think anytime we can get people on there is a good thing. But that being said, there's a quote that we have out in the fireman world, is that firemen hate two things. They hate the way it is, and they hate change, especially volunteers, right? So any changes that we do, and as we've been doing throughout this year, need to be done in a careful manner to make sure that it's put out there that this is to support the current cadre of volunteers that we have here within the township. This stipend program, in my opinion, is working very well. I've heard other people state the same thing. I know especially at Lingelstown, we would rarely have people hanging out at the station prior to this program. Since its implementation, there are many nights a week now that we have people at the firehouse, hanging out, having brotherhood, having dinners, and are ready to respond to any emergencies that come in. So I will say that stipend program is really doing better than I thought it would, so kudos to that. In the ordinance, we have the ordinance from earlier this summer, there is a line in there that really hits home with the volunteers. Quote it out of it, "Whereas under and pursuant to the terms, conditions, and provisions set forth in this agreement, the township has, is desirous of continuing to provide adequate and professional volunteer fire protection service under the direction of the Lower Paxton Township Bureau of Fire and coordination with the Public Safety Committee." And the main thing in there is adequate and professional volunteer fire protection service. So that comes into play in some of my next statements is, while we're talking about adding these 10 firefighters, and generally I'm on board with that, and most of my membership is, there's still some that really aren't, because of, you know, they're concerned that it's an eventual replacement, right? So they've been doing this thing for many years out of the kindness of their hearts, leaving the dinner table, leaving different functions to come answer the aid of strangers. That's what we do. That's why we do what we do it. So I would hate to see anything happen to that. Currently, right now, there's volunteers throughout the township that are covering a decent amount of the shifts. There's still room for improvement. If this would go through as the firemen with the additional 10 staff, it just, it needs to be done in a way that it's shared amongst the companies, and that's how it was presented to us. It would be shared amongst whoever would need the staffing that day, and it needs to be done in a way that is not in any way or form to go against what's currently happening with the volunteers as far as them giving their time and continuing to do what they do. So I will say the coordination between the companies is at an all-time high. I think Chief Fogg and Director Kishiba can really speak to that. We have a daily staffing group every morning where the chiefs of the departments figure out who's around for the day, and based upon that, they'll place apparatus out of service if it makes sense. That's obviously not what we want to do, and I think this staffing could help alleviate some of that out-of-service time. We started cross-staffing when people are available. So for instance, if there's extra people at a certain fire station and there's not enough at another one, we'll move people around to properly staff units as we can with the volunteers that are currently there. And then we started a new program where we're cross-training drivers on specialized pieces of equipment at the different fire companies, which we've never done in the past. So there's a lot of things moving forward to really help and bolster what's going on. The thing when the units are placed out of service is, while it might not be an immediate response from the home company, the way that Dolphin County CAD is set up is that it will immediate dispatch, immediately dispatch the next due unit of that type. So minimal delays when it comes to dispatch there. So but generally speaking, myself and the Lingelstown Fire Company are in support of the 10 firemen that they're proposing, as long as it is done in a way that it doesn't hurt the volunteer base. That's the biggest concern that we have, is that once there's career personnel in, you know, the volunteers will be looked at differently, maybe lesser firemen than the career guys, and I would hope that wouldn't go that direction, but it's always a valid, you know, concern in the mind. in the minds of the guys and gals who've been doing it for many years out of the goodness of their heart. So with that being said, I'll move on to the Assistant Chief position, and myself and Deputy Graham have talked in depth about this. We'd agree to disagree, but this is, you know, something I wanted to talk about at the one budget meeting when we ran out of time, but I do not support the Assistant Chief position, and let me tell you why. That was presented as a vehicle maintenance coordinator, so that there is a single point of contact for all of the apparatus in the township that are owned by the township. Makes perfect sense. It's needed. It can help out to have one point of contact for that. What we call that in a fire service is an engineer, right? We don't call that an Assistant Chief. Engineers will do that, and then this person was also to supervise the career staff if it goes through in the absence of the Public Safety Director or the Deputy Chief. So that's understandable. The application that went out and is being advertised is truly a command position for command staff with a fully outfitted vehicle that personally I don't believe we need. Between the fire companies, I believe there's nine or 10 command vehicles that are outfitted, along with chiefs that drive those. So I don't think that we could spend, we don't need to spend that money. I don't think we need to spend that money on that new vehicle, on that full outfit, because that just adds another level of someone to kind of take some duties away from the current chiefs and officers that are there.
Chief, may I ask something, please?
Yes, sir.
Usually this detail, and I'm trying to follow you.
Sure.
Usually discussions of this detail are handled at the Public Safety Committee level. Has this been discussed there?
We have discussed it there, yeah.
Because I just don't want to get into the habit of each department, each company brings their concerns and their alternative views and their opposition and their detailed analysis of hiring and different, the way different people are going to be used. I really think it serves this board better when that's hashed out at the Public Safety Committee level, simply because we're not experts, and I could see this getting out of hand where each company comes to us with their individual opinions about individual positions and individual initiatives, and that's, I'm learning a lot, and I'm still going to focus, going to focus here and try to follow you, but I'm just saying, in general, I don't, I don't want to encourage this to where all the companies are coming at us with these things that ideally should be handled at the Public Safety Committee.
Sure, yeah. We did speak of public safety. Again, these are points that I was going to bring up at the one budget meeting that we ran out of time and wasn't able to have those points across. So that's why I'm just doing it here. Again, don't take this as Lingelstown Fire Company being in opposition of this process.
No, you were clear about that.
We are very, very much on board with working with the board and the township and the Bureau of Fire to move this township to the next level of service that the residents deserve. So please don't take it in that fashion. But going back to that, again, I think we can save some money and save some gripe by doing, if you're going to do this position, make it an engineer. I don't think they need to have that command presence to actually do the fire calls as far as running them and things like that. There is a lot of chiefs out there and a lot of officers out there that have done a very good job. Look at our mountain fire the other week. My lieutenant ran that mountain fire, in my opinion, perfectly, and he's not even a chief yet. So there's a lot of good guys out there, and I just want to make sure that we're moving forward in the proper ways. So with that, the posting that's made, the requirements are pretty tight. EMT, the ICS classes, all those things, most of those things people will have, but there's only five people eligible internally for that position based upon those requirements. I would really like to see that modified to be an engineer with, without the EMT and those type of requirements for a commanding officer, and it would greatly open the pool for more internal current volunteers to apply for that position if they feel the need they want to do so. So I'll wrap it up because I'm getting long-winded, obviously, but as a public servant, I really would be remiss if I didn't issue this quick word of caution. Again, while I'm in support of adding staffing to our fire trucks, it's a no-brainer. If it's not done in a way to assist the volunteers and to work properly with the volunteers, the volunteers don't have to show up, and I don't want to see the board to be faced with an immediate crisis to hire many, many more people quicker than we're ready to.
Well, that's where your great leadership skills come into play.
That's right. That's right.
And that is our main goal. We need to keep those volunteers.
Hundred percent.
The volunteers, the stipend program, and this is to fill the void when there isn't enough during, from 6A to 6P, when some of the fire companies have been out of service the past couple of months, to fill that. So we know that the North Side and the South Side are completely taken care of, you know, but, you know, I came from a volunteer fire company family, so we do not want to get rid of those people. They are there to help, and Director Khashiba, he knows that we want it to be a family. So I, that's.
And that came up in the budget meetings. I did ask, because I was worried about that. Why won't, what is the risk that the volunteer system will collapse if people know they can just wait and the paid crews will eventually take over? So I think it's on everybody's mind, because we're not, we came into this year with a new stipend program thinking we're going to see how this works, and then midway through the year, we are hearing about, forget it, we gotta, we need to bring on 10 paid firefighters. So we definitely take that to heart. We're not looking to raise the fire tax any more than it has to be, because that was a concern about how this would affect the volunteers, but it's, we're, this is new for everybody here, and that's definitely a concern that we take to heart, and that's why I'm hoping we have a nice, active, vigorous Public Safety Committee. Like you said, everyone's working together now in a way that's unprecedented, which just warms my heart, and as a citizen makes me feel good because we, all of us get to go to bed at night knowing that we get top-notch protection, and we want to keep it that way.
Sure, absolutely.
I was with Chief Heffelfinger this afternoon from Richland Township. He sits on the board with me, and they have had paid staff out there too, and they also have the volunteers. And him and I had that conversation, and they're volunteers and the paid staff, it's one big family, and that's what we're going to have here in Lower Paxton Township. We're going to make sure we do not want to get rid of those volunteers.
I'm glad to hear. So yeah, in closing, I thank you for the time. Again, Lingelstown Fire Company and myself and the other fire companies look forward to working together continually to provide the best service that we can. So we just need to make sure that we're doing it in a way that we don't get into something that we're not ready for, so.
And for all the firemen that are here, police officers, again, the board wants to thank you for all your service that you give to the residents of Lower Paxton Township. So we really appreciate you, and we appreciate the volunteers. We really, really appreciate the volunteers, so. So thank you for coming forth, and again, thanks for the firefighters that are here this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah. Director, would you like to say something? I saw you get up there.
Yes, Director Adam Khashiba, thank you, members of the board. Just want to kind of reinforce some of the concerns that the chief may have. We have been doing a yeoman's job at getting this under control between Deputy Chief Graham and the three fire company chiefs and their command staff. And what I've seen happening, which Chief Harp had mentioned, is great work being done as a whole, as three different silos, and now the umbrella organization of the Bureau of Fire. I think we are far beyond any place we've been before in cooperation. I do want to, you know, kind of ease the concerns to the volunteers and to the board as we've been doing all along when it comes to the career staffing. I think between myself and Deputy Chief Graham, it's setting the tone when these individuals come on board, if this budget does in fact make its way through and is ratified, is setting the tone on how to handle the interaction with the volunteers. And quite frankly, they're there just to assist the volunteers, and without the volunteers, the command staff and the firefighters that we're hiring would not be enough. We rely heavily and will continue to rely heavily on the volunteers, and I don't want them to forget that. As it relates to the Assistant Chief position and the vehicle associated with that, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to that in the fact that, you know, depending on the values and what they're going for now, we're averaging, based on all the township-owned apparatus, 11.9 to about 12.1, 12.2 million dollars' worth of apparatus, and we have relied solely on the three different fire companies to handle that maintenance of that apparatus, among other things. And I do believe moving forward, as we streamline with this overall umbrella organization, that position, and I know the thoughts that were discussed here, that position is going to be key to ensuring that our apparatus that is continually answering more and more calls is maintenance and done so in a unified fashion. Now, why the Assistant Chief position? We've covered that many times, to your point, sir, in public safety. It's many, many positions and responsibilities within that job description. The logistics piece of that goes from public education to the vehicle maintenance to commanding fires when we're short on personnel to do that. You know, to the chief's point, there was a lot of work done with public safety and the job descriptions and the ability to be in different chief positions that have that title within these fire companies was ratified by all the groups, and those trainings and qualifications are high, and they should be, because they're the ones commanding those firefighters daily going into these IDLH environments. So there are actually vacancies that are occurring because people have to reach a standard. So there are vacancies at a command level that the fire companies are doing a great job of working towards with the rest of us and filling, and I think this Assistant Chief position, by its very nature, will be controlling and making decisions based on township apparatus, based on township staff, policies, procedures, you name it, and I do believe it has to come from a chief-level position, simply because they're going to be making day-to-day decisions, budgetary decisions, apparatus, and safety decisions that must come from someone that has very sound qualifications. And that EMT level, I think there's another piece of that that we can get well into the weeds on, but with this career staffing coming on board and having that supplemental medical staff ability to assist our partner EMS agencies and provide that stationary bridge between initial care and them, I believe that Township Assistant Chief should be an EMT, and I believe that, again, that's just yet another benefit, providing services to our citizens. And I think this is, all the steps that you've all heard many times over are going a long way, and we are, we are going to work with the volunteers. They are the ones we want to support, and they are our lifeline in the township as residents and as a career staff. So I appreciate their work. I appreciate everything you all have done and listening to our proposals, and I look forward to working with them in the future, as does the Deputy Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question for Sean. Are you, are you concerned that this Assistant Chief would assert the authority of the chiefs and conflict with the authority of the chiefs?
I think there's just a general concern out there of not knowing, because there's no program or outline at this point as to what that person would do in the command staff, per se. So I think that is out there. The chiefs that are in the fire companies now have worked a long time to get those certifications to work their way up the ladder to get to that point. And I think just another concern is, you know, you throw someone else into there in the command structure, and now that's one more person to answer to, right, that wasn't there before. So, you know, that's kind of where we're coming from with that.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Miller.
Just briefly.
Please.
There were a couple items mentioned at past meetings, and they may have been answered. I didn't see them mentioned in the budget. There is the, you know, 242nd response time, and then down on Dairy Street. Is there going to be, I didn't see anything budgeted for another firehouse.
No.
Is that going to happen?
No.
No, so that coverage can come from other areas.
Right.
Okay. And on the Conway Park, Hodges Heights parks, I didn't see anything in here. Connecting those with sidewalks, it's on our Greenway Committee. We don't have an urban planner, per se. Some of those things could have been incorporated into development of all the new houses on Conway to get sidewalks and a bike path. I saw nothing mentioned, and that's big money. And I lead into the urban planner concept is that when these things are planned out, we kind of know what we're going to have in the future to make sure they're included when they're doing the grading, the excavation, the elevations, the placement of utilities. So all these things are in a logical, normal place. So, well, we're not going to put the sidewalk in today, but we're going to put a park in here three years from now. We know we're going to do that, so we will have all this stuff ready to go. And then, of course, the developer knows we've been moving towards these temporary waivers so that, well, we're not going to have you put it in now, like Hoffman Ford, like Sheets on Route 22. We have two temporary waivers already in action, and that could be done to then fund this, rather than seeing the township have to take money and find this money and find this grant. It's included, the developers are making money. I'm not going to say they're not. I know they have to be, or they wouldn't be in business. So that money.
Yeah, I was going to let Mr. Gutschall answer about the Conway, the survey, the study, the traffic study, if you would, please.
Yeah, yeah, great question, sir. The, and as you're aware, as a dedicated member of that committee, the Greenway Committee, you guys have been doing a fantastic job at literally mapping, we're in the process, as you know, of mapping all of our deferred sidewalk waivers. We're also, as Mr., other Mr. Miller, Money Man Miller, mentioned earlier, that we are in the process as well of doing the active transportation plan, which, again, I think goes back to the board's kind of innovative planning approach with regard to making sure that we're doing all we can to identify some of the concerns, particularly with regard to our transportation network, but then also, more importantly, how do we fund those things? We're now interviewing the engineers who will one day be doing the active transportation plan, and, you know, one of the things that I'm particularly focused on in those interviews when I'm questioning these folks is, you know, what are you going to do? What sort of plan are you going to give us to allow us to implement it? So we don't just want a pie-in-the-sky plan, we want a plan that we'll be able to implement and identify to us grant sources and things like that. So to answer your specific question relative to Conway Park, Hodges Heights, yeah, this budget does not specifically contemplate any expenditure of funds to create sidewalk, to tie those together. However, it is our hope that through the active transportation plan that we identify that as a need, or maybe not, I don't want to send the message that we're absolutely going to do that, but, you know, is that a potential plan? You know, can we do that? How do we do it? And potentially then, how do we fund it? So it's something that's certainly on our kind of long-range plan, but not, not as it relates to spending in 2025, so, but it's on the, it's on the docket.
Yeah, we discussed that at our meeting, trying to find a way to get people safely down there. We did have, we do have, we don't, I don't have time to talk about it now. We do have some ideas, solutions. I looked at what the township really owns there, and there's a big hunk of real estate there that can provide a way so people don't have to walk through when the trucks are coming through. That was brought up here at one of the meetings.
Okay.
And the other thing is, and to close with this, I don't have the citations with me, but when you research the articles, there are, there are other municipalities who have gone back to rescinding their waivers. They found that, well, you know, we gave a waiver for this, and, you know, you haven't put your sidewalk in in 20 years, you need to put it in, and that's a way to get the owners or developers or the people who got that waiver, well, I had nothing to hook to. I had, it was, I couldn't do it. Well, there is now, and that's why the temporary waiver probably is, might be something to really look at and see. But then again, again, other municipalities have taken it to court and had the owners put in those sidewalks or put in those improvements, because now they're needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. We're all done with the budget? Yes?
John Fogg.
John Fogg, Chief of the Colonial Park Fire Company, six-two-nine-three, Stable Court. I'm a little upset the director didn't need to put his address on record because you know who he is, though. We violated some rules there, but I'm not going to waste a lot of your time. I just wanted to support what Sean had said and, and say that we have worked better together than ever.
That's great. It's good to hear. I've been here 11 years and it is so good to hear.
And we've had a lot of years here previously where we had exactly what Supervisor Judd said, where everybody's here opining their own plan of what they would want and it hasn't been like that. I appreciate what he said because the budget meeting did run over and we didn't have time to all talk. I hope next year, maybe instead of trying to cram three hours into an hour and a half, maybe do police and fire separate because I think that's what brought some of this up is a lot of that stuff was going to be talked about and it didn't get to get talked about with the supervisors in the open forum there. I think the career staff is great. I think the career staff is a great idea. I don't think it's going to hurt on our side, the, the volunteers at all. The volunteers that are coming are going to come regardless. What it is going to do is fill a lot of gaps and we're probably, because of the transient area that Colonial Park is with garden apartments, we're probably the worst off in terms of recruitment of volunteers where Lingelstown is probably the best. They probably have the best volunteer rate of any community because they're a very home-driven community. And I, I will second what, what Sean said about the stipend program. It has done tremendous things for them where they were always home response and they may have taken four, five, six minutes to get out the door and now they're out the door just as quick as anybody else because most of the time they have people in the firehouse. So I think we've seen tremendous benefit from the stipend program and I think with the career staffing, we'll see the best of both worlds where we have 100% guaranteed fire protection, which is what everybody in here deserves. The chief's position, I talked to Sean at depth and he's right, we talked to public safety. There's differences of opinions on that and I support it simply because I, I think it just takes a load off of the individual departments doing what they're currently doing in terms of maintenance. And I know if it's coordinated correctly, like at our firehouse, we, we've coordinated maintenance and because we're able to coordinate things, we keep less stuff out of service for less amount of times and not multiple apparatus out of service at the same times. And we're currently doing that through text messages and volunteers doing it, but I think having somebody that's stipened with that job and that position just to do that guarantees that, again, your apparatus that you purchased stays in service the most efficiently that it can. And I think that's the benefit to that position, along with if it's used to manage the career staffing, if that's part of that, it helps with that as well. So not going to waste any more, it's a long meeting as, as it's been, so I just wanted to clarify that Sean's not lying to anybody. We're getting along better than we ever have. I'm happy to work with all.
Want to thank you all for the live-in programs too. I think that, you know, helps with the response time also, you know, with the live-in, so. Great.
Thank you.
All right, are we, we're good. Okay, we're going to move on. Mrs. Zerby, thank you for staying. We have action to approve a preliminary final subdivision plan for sixty-six-ten Union Deposit Road, Plan twenty-four-dash-thirteen. Mrs. Zerby?
Yes, good evening. This is a preliminary final subdivision plan for sixty-six-six-two Group LLC proposes to subdivide parcel thirty-five-seventy-two-nineteen, consisting of thirty-seven-point-eighteen acres into three separate lots. Lot one will have a total area of twelve-point-four-three acres. Lot two will have a total area of fourteen-point-fifteen acres and lot three will create a lot of fourteen acres. Lot thirty-five-seventy-two-fifty and two-eighty-eight will be absorbed into the subdivision. This site is in the agricultural residential zoning district and is served by private well and public sewer. The applicant is requesting five waivers for the plan. All waivers requested are consistent with a subdivision in the agricultural zoning district and are all recommended by staff for approval. The applicant is requesting one deferral, which is to provide a stormwater management plan since the proposed subdivision does not include any proposed construction. It is appropriate to defer this requirement until the building plans are submitted. Staff recommends approval of the request to defer the stormwater management plan until the building plans are submitted. Staff supports the deferral and this plan comes to you tonight with only five administrative comments and two general comments to be satisfied prior to recording. There are a couple of representatives for the plan here this evening if the board wishes to ask any questions.
Okay, whoever you're representing, okay, if we could just have your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening. Joe Ab Carter, I am the Surveyor Record with Delaware Engineering. I reside at fifty-seven forty-one Union Deposit Road.
Okay, was there anything that you would like to tell us? Mrs. Zerby did go in-depth, but I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
No, ma'am, not, not at this time. Like I said, simple subdivision, three lots along Union Deposit.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I think Mr. Miller wants to know if there's any waivers.
Yeah, so you, you.
We went through that already.
Yeah, so you're okay with all the waiver, I mean, we're okay with all the waivers, you're okay with all the comments, administrative comments, everything will be met, Mrs. Zerby?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. With that said, do I have a motion to approve a preliminary final subdivision plan for sixty-six-ten Union Deposit Road?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Improvement guarantees, I'm not going to hit that because it's probably going to go off. So we have the Estates of Autumn Oaks, we have Poplar Street, just two of them tonight. Yep, any questions, board? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payment of bills, we have Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority. Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion to payment of the bills?
I make the motion to pay the bills.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any announcements from anyone?
Oh, well, just the announcement, Godspeed to Supervisor Norm Zumis. We've been together several years.
Six years, four months, twenty-eight days and nine hours.
And, you know.
Still reconsider.
We had some fun and we did some good.
Yeah, we did.
It's been a joy.
We did.
Godspeed.
Okay, with that said, we have an authority meeting next Tuesday night in this room at seven and the Board of Supervisors will then meet on December the third at seven o'clock. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for attending.